In person and remotely consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of being allowed to have all meetings in a publicly accessible location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. For the for the public to join the meeting, please please join remotely by dialing 408 650 3123 and using access code 235235861. Or the public can join via computer at global dot go to meeting dot com forward slash join forward slash 235235861. All supporting materials that have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda material. Okay, and with that, we will rise for the National Grid for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, in accordance with Master General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Subsection A 3, strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of a public body, and the Chair so declares, and to comply with the Act under the authority of any general or special law pursuant to Master General Law, Chapter 30A, Subsection 21, A 7, Attorney-client Communication, to come out of executive session and reconvene in open meeting. I therefore declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of this public body, and that the Board will come out of executive session and reconvene at a later at a later point. And with that, to go, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second. And Mr. Carpenter? Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Roofley?
Yes.
And the Chair is a yes, it is a vote. All right, we don't need anything to reconvene, right? All right, so we're going to reconvene the open session. We've already done the recording announcement and the Pledge of Allegiance, and Sharon stated we have no public comments at this time. So we're going to go forward to 5A. That is the vote to continue the public meeting on Whitney Street Home Builders LLC for local initiative project for housing development at 16 Perry Place. Moving that to the November 28th meeting. Do we have any discussion, any questions?
This conference will now be recorded.
Do we anticipate they're going to be ready on the 28th? I just hope to see the residents keep seeing it and then it being continued.
Through the Chair, when I spoke to them, they would be ready. And the request had come from us to postpone it for the two weeks, not from them. Executive session tonight as well as tax classification. We didn't want people to be sitting here, you know, at 10 o'clock. So they appreciated the extra time and they felt that they would be able to make it by the 28th.
So I like a motion to continue it to November 28, 2022 at 6:30.
A second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is a vote. Okay, and moving on to BJ Wholesale Club Incorporated Auto Repair License at 777 Washington Street, Auburn, Mass. Do we have the?
Yep.
Gentlemen can come up. You can come up here tonight, right?
Yeah.
You can come up to the to the Chairs right here.
Right here?
Yep. Just give your name and address for the record.
Paul Cadena, General Manager for Tires, 3234 Doe Run, Austin, Texas, 78748.
Jason Sador, Regional Manager for Tires, 950 Lead Drive Rav, Somerset, Mass.
Okay, and do we have a motion to open the hearing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is a vote. All right, gentlemen. Yep. Oh, no, you wanted to, do you have anything to present or?
Oh, okay, well, actually, I thought that was already presented to you.
We do have materials.
Okay, yes.
Yes, if there's anything further, really.
Oh, no, further, no, no, we just would.
No, there's no updates to it. It's just the same, same as what we're here for before, just getting adding a alignment service to our to our service offerings at the club.
Okay, all right. Any questions from the Board? No? Town Administration? Do we have any, any public comment? Nope. No, tax classification. You never know. All right, and seeing no questions, do we have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And do we have any further motions?
A second.
Motioned and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is a vote. All set, gentlemen, thank you.
Very much.
Chair, would you mind taking these two out of order because our treasurer corrected them.
That is. Could I get a motion to move up 7A, 7B and C? Hi, we have a motion to move up Agenda Item 7B and C, which has been seconded. Motion by Mr. Carpenter, seconded by Ms. Roofley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is a vote. All right, so we have.
Would you like to invite the Treasurer?
Yes, if we could have the Town Treasurer and Clerk come up.
Thank you for taking that.
Mr. Chairman, just a brief introduction as to the Board's action tonight. We just got bids for a $600,000 short-term notes from the State Treasury. The bids came in at, we had two bids, one from Hometown Bank at an annual rate of 4.15% and Newport 5 Cent Savings Bank at 4.64%. So the award is going to Hometown Bank for the full value of 600,000. The Board is being asked tonight as a requirement to vote the useful life of the equipment that has been funded by that that ban, and that's the item under, the first item under 7B. So there is an attached schedule, has to be voted by the Board, that identifies all the equipment being purchased and the life of that equipment.
This is CIP.
Yes, this is CIP items. For the exciting.
Gotcha, gotcha.
You can tell this was written by a lawyer.
All right, do we have a motion on the on 7B?
I move that the maximum useful life of the department's equipment listed below to be financed with a portion of the proceeds of the $255,000 borrowing authorized by a vote of the town passed May 3, 2022, Article 4, is hereby determined pursuant to General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 1, to be as follows. Replacement of Epson Bright Link Projection Systems in buildings. Do you leave the amounts?
Emo in the years, yes.
Okay. $25,500, $10 years. District-wide furniture purchases for classrooms, $10,000 loans, 10 years. Equipment, furniture needed for special ed, i.e. SN room conversions, $15,000, 10 years. Upgrading of technology switches in buildings, $84,500, 10 years. Replacement purchase of a production copier machine for graphics, $15,000, for 10 years. District-wide generator upgrades, $20,000, for 10 years. Replacement of condensate tank at 5 West Street, $5,000, 10 years. Security cameras and central monitoring upgrades in buildings, $43,000, 10 years. Pitching mound, batting area, baseball field, $32,000, 10 years. I move that the sale of the $600,000 bond anticipation note dated November 28, 2022 to Hometown Bank at the price of 600,000 is hereby approved and confirmed. The note shall be payable on November 28, 2023, and shall bear interest at the rate of 4.15%.
A second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is a vote. Do we really just do B and C together?
I wouldn't want this challenge, I wouldn't ask for a separate.
Move for, okay. All right, so we're going to treat that as just having, Mr. Carpenter, do you want to revise your motion just to remove the secondary part in terms of the 600,000? Okay.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. All right, moving on to 7C, that is the Board vote for the sale of the $600,000 bond anticipation note dated November 28, 2022 to Hometown Bank at the price of 600,000. And do we have a motion?
I move that the sale of the $600,000 bond anticipation note dated November 28, 2022 to Hometown Bank at the price of 600,000 is hereby approved and confirmed. The note shall be payable on November 28, 2022, and shall bear interest at the rate of 4.15%.
A second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is a vote. Thank you. Get our signatures.
Yes, the first one, that's the bond that's settled.
Sure, just right here?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, right there.
Yep.
Sorry about that.
Oh, no, you're good.
And everybody has to sign. And then down here, this is the certificate for the town clerk.
Your seal, okay.
There's one for the bank and the home clerk. There's the other two.
The other two.
That's actually, thank you.
You're welcome.
So we need to just a thought, if you go to the next, I know we have National Grid hearing at 6:30, so we should get to them, and that's at 7:04. It's not official until Doug finds it. We know, and she's standing right here. So should we take this?
Which one?
7C, it's a vote on the Board of Registered Appointments. Oh, I was like, is that okay? They have to submit three. Smart.
Oh, D, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, is it D? I can't see, it's, I said C. That's why I messed you up, sorry.
Yeah, we can move that forward, yeah.
I was just thinking while she was here, and then we could let National Grid know we'll get to them after this next thing.
Yep.
And then we'll get to tax classification. Think it'll be off by five minutes. Thank you. Make sure she's staying. Let me just check the 7C.
Yep, just one second.
Okay.
So, so I volunteer the next year, I mean that.
Perfect.
Yeah. I really thought I was gonna have to read it.
Head goes, yes, I was like, oh.
I didn't expect you to know. That's why I looked it down.
I just wanted to know, just trying to help you out.
The Town Clerk would like that.
Yeah, okay. All right, and do we have a motion to move up Agenda Item 7D?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is a vote.
Thank you, so if if possible, thank you for doing that. The Town Clerk is here, if she could come up and join, because we have a memo from her in your packet about the Board of Registered Appointments. And then, so if anyone is aware, then we would go to the hearing that's for National Grid, because there is somebody on the line for National Grid, and then we'll be just about within a minute or two on time for the tax class. Nice.
Hello, how are you? Yep, all set.
So can you just explain to them what it is you're seeking and what?
We need to replace the registrar, which he likes to destroy. Or a registrar, but unfortunately Susan Nebo passed away, so, you know, election season, so I had to ask the Democrat, we have two Republicans, we need a Democrat, so. Ask the other Democratic town community to allow three recommendations, and that's what they do.
Okay.
So the Board needs to vote to, on one of the names that was submitted to them?
Yes, they have to submit three.
If the Chair, I make a motion, we appoint Dorian Goodrich of Lowenbrook Drive to the vacancy.
A second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is a vote. Thank you. Okay.
There is someone from National Grid, she's on the line.
Okay. Hope everyone's following along, I'm having trouble myself. All right, so moving on to 5C. Okay, so we have petition of, petition by National Grid in Verizon, New England for poll locations on West Tech Drive. And it's my understanding we have a representative from National Grid on the internet here?
Yes, CJ Guisier. Mr. Guisier, if you could unmute. Maybe, do you want to speak into your microphone, maybe you can't hear me?
Mr. Guisier, can you unmute your microphone? Might have stepped away.
Sent a unmute request to him. There we go.
Oh, there we go.
Here we go.
Hi, Mr. Guisier, can you hear us?
I don't know if you can hear me, but I can't hear anything.
Oh, you were on mute. Ms. Guisier, can you hear us now? Oh, still good. How about now, Mr. Guisier?
Now I can hear you.
Okay. All right, so we just called, we just called this matter, so this is for the West Tech Drive poll locations?
Yep, correct.
Okay, you can proceed.
We're actually not looking for a poll location up there, we need to do some underground work on the end of West Tech Drive.
Is this, okay. My apologies, we've been jumping around, Mr. Guisier, give me one second. Do we have a motion to open the hearing?
A second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is a vote. Okay, sorry about that, Mr. Guisier, so you're looking to do some underground work at the corner of West Tech?
Yeah, there's a cul-de-sac at the end of West Tech Drive, and Evisos is looking for a new service too, and vacant lot that's there.
Okay. All right, any questions from the Board members?
Is there, through the Chair, is there going to be a disruption in service for these businesses that are butters?
Could you hear that?
That disruption should be probably to Evisos's house.
Source property.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? No? Any public comment, public question? Town Administration?
I'll say.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion to close the hearing?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is a vote, and do we have a further motion?
I would make a motion that we approve it, subject to our normal language.
A second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is a vote. You're all set, Mr. Guisier, thank you.
Yep, have a good night, thank you.
You too. All right, moving on to Agenda Item 5D, the public hearing tax classification. With that, we have our town assessor. And do we have a motion to open?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is a vote. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Just bear with me for a second, I think, oh, there he is, John was going to just get this rolling, I'm a little technologically challenged. Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, this is the fiscal year 2023 tax classification hearing. I am here with Lisa Tagonsky, and my name is Seth Willard, and we are from the Assessing Department. The, there's roughly about 30 slides, so if I could ask you all just to hold questions till the end, we will try to go through them. So just take notes, and we have extra presentations up here, if anybody needs a physical copy. With that being said, we will start the slideshow. So an introduction is, the calculations for the tax rate and other numbers are estimated as of the time of the preparation of this presentation. There may be additional information, informational slides, including in the handouts that are not part of tonight's presentation. The purpose of the classification hearing is to allow a shift in the tax burden between property classes. This does not change the total tax levy for the community, it simply determines the share to be borne by each class. What the tax classification hearing does not do, it does not determine the tax rate for the town, it only determines the distribution. The classification does not determine how much money can be raised, the town meeting voters determine what the tax levy will be. Your tax rate, the levy is determined by the town meeting appropriations and expenditures, state and county charges, is paid for by using town revenues, excise, fees, enterprise and other available funds, total taxable real estate and personal property, state aid and reimbursements, new growth, and debt exclusion and overrides. The role of the assessor is to value the property for purpose of equitable taxation, administer abatements and exemptions, and be a resource to the taxpayers and the Select Board, while also explaining the classification options to the selectmen. The overview of the revaluation process, residential properties are adjusted annually to full and fair market value. Attributes affecting value include style, condition, interior and exterior features and size. Commercial and industrial properties are based on an income approach to value per the Department of Revenue requirements. Personal property is generally valued at net book value minus depreciation. There's going to be four votes at this classification hearing. The residential factor, which shifts the tax rate between residential and commercial properties. Open space discount shifts the tax burden within the residential classes to discount open space. The residential exemption, it shifts the burden within the residential classes, and the small commercial exemption, it shifts the burden within the commercial and industrial classes to give a discount to qualifying properties. Percentage of the levy for property, there are four property classes, and this is kind of a historical view of fiscal year 2008 versus fiscal year 2023, a 15-year look. And you can see that the residential percentage of real estate in 2023 was 75.77, in 2008 was 73.39, fairly similar. Same with the commercial, 2008 there was 17.68, 2023 this 14.41. And industrial and personal property make up a smaller portion, but they are in the same type of ratio. The tax levy, the levy limit is the maximum amount the town can levy in a given year. It's last year's levy, levy plus new growth, plus 2.5%. The maximum allowable levy is the levy limit plus debt exclusions and overrides. Excess levy capacity is the levy limit minus the actual levy. The fiscal year 2023 levy limit calculations, the fiscal year 2022 levy limit was 50,724,825. The fiscal '23 2.5 allowable levy increase is 1.268 million. The fiscal '23 new growth was 698,261. Fiscal '23 proposition 2.5 override was zero. The 2023 levy limit was 52,691,207. '23 debt exclusion, 2.77 million, for a maximum allowable levy for fiscal '23 of The fiscal '23, what are the factors that drive the rate increase? Increase in the excluded debt for the Auburn Middle School for the upcoming fiscal year, those were the debt exclusions, demolitions, properties that are going off the tax road due to demolition from snow, damage fire, or other causes, properties becoming exempt, foreclosures by the town, purchases by exempt organizations. Fiscal 2023 growth trends, residential growth is up. It's the most stable growth, not as subject to being skewed by individual properties. Commercial growth is steady, numbers can be affected annually by one significant new property addition. Industrial growth is up, numbers can be affected annually by one significant new property or addition, Commerce Drive is an example. Personal property growth is up. New growth comes from new businesses moving in and out of town, and accounted for a significant increase this year. The new growth four-year trend, fiscal 2023, you can see the personal property growth was up. The industrial growth was up. And all the growth was up, but primarily personal property this year and residential. Mary D. Stone and Julia Bancroft came online. Mentioned the personal property, and commercial industrial growth is stable this year, primarily due to Commerce Drive construction, newer projects starting. The residential value percentage changed due to revaluation from fiscal '22 to fiscal '23. So you can see the fiscal '22 numbers, the single family last year was up about 9.49%. This year was, is up 13.8%. So in general, it was about 4.1% more than fiscal '22. Vote on the resident residential discount, up to 20% of discount to owner occupied residential properties, shifts the burden from less expensive homes onto the higher-priced homes and non-residents. Works in communities with large amounts of vacation homes or non-owner occupant properties. Vote on the small commercial exemption, the final vote for the Board of Selectmen is the commercial, to vote on the commercial exemption, there's no effect on residential and personal property. Industrial properties do not qualify for the small business exemption, but share the tax burden for the exemption. The exemption goes to the property owner and not the business that relies on the trickle-down effect. Continuing with the small commercial exemption, it's for multi-business properties, all must qualify, they have to be commercial in base, values must be less than $1 million, and each business that resides on the property on the parcel must have 10 employees or fewer. Assessors go through a list of businesses from the Department of Workforce and Development to qualify each property. The businesses not look, that are not on this list must be qualified by the assessor. And the small and the small incorporated businesses must be on the list. Each year, our properties not in the list need to refile applications with the assessor's office. If the small business, commercial exemption is approved, it shifts the tax rate up to ten percent by annual vote between the occupied, by qualifying small business, businesses onto the other commercial and industrial properties. So it's only within the commercial industrial class. Applications are taken after the tax classification and processing can delay setting the tax rate if applications come in after this hearing. Any exemptions not processed prior to submission of the recap will impact the overlay account. Applying for the small business exemption, this is kind of an example of if you look at the commercial value on the left, and this assumes a commercial tax rate of twenty-four dollars per thousand, but if the property qualified, you can see on the right column, if it's a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar value, then they would save about six-hundred dollars in taxation money. If it was a half-million-dollar assessed value commercial property, they would save twelve-hundred dollars. Seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand assessed value commercial property, they'd save eighteen-hundred up to a million dollars, a million or over, and you do not qualify. This is a historic trends, the fiscal year and the corresponding CIP split selected, the factor. So you can see in twenty, at the bottom in 2022 and 2021, it was one-point-one-five. I'm not gonna go through each one of them, but that's kind of a historical overview of where the shift has been. And the commercial, industrial and personal property growth trends as factors has changed. Again, if you look, this is historical for the fiscal year all the way on the left side. Go to the bottom, we're in 2023 and the total growth was six-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-one. Residential new growth was two-hundred-thousand-nine-eighty-two. It was about twenty-nine or thirty percent of the total growth. And the commercial, industrial and personal property was close to five-hundred-thousand dollars or seventy-two percent roughly of the total growth for fiscal twenty-three. Fiscal twenty-two cost to do business in Worcester County. Out of, these are our neighboring communities and the corresponding tax rates. Out of the communities that kind of abut or are similar to Auburn, Worcester and Auburn are the only two communities in this slide that have a split tax rate. And this rate represents the commercial rate for Worcester and for Auburn. All the other towns, their businesses have, their commercial properties have one rate, one tax rate, and it's the corresponding tax rate. So you can see on the bar graph that obviously it's Worcester has a high commercial rate, followed by Auburn and Sturbridge and so forth. This is the rate chart for fiscal twenty-three. In the middle column, the highlighted yellow column, we're at one-point-one-five, would result if the tax rate stayed the same at a residential tax rate of fifteen dollars and seventy-two cents. Commercial, industrial rate would be nineteen dollars and seven cents and personal property rate would be eighteen dollars and ninety-nine cents, assuming the small business exemption gets adopted. And if you can look at the corresponding rates per factor shift, you know, we could go through all those, but it's approximately on the residential side, five, five-and-a-half cents or so on a tax rate change for the residential side, each one-hundredth you shift. So the impact of splitting the tax rate on the average property in fiscal 2023. On the left-hand side, you can see the category residential property, commercial, industrial, personal property. And the average 2023 value, so the average residential value in Auburn for fiscal twenty-three was three-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand, six-hundred-and-forty-six. The average commercial value was one-point-two-two million. The average industrial value is about one-point-seven and the average personal property count was a hundred-and-forty-two-thousand, one-hundred-and-ninety-three. So the corresponding columns, as you move to the right of that, are the, kind of the corresponding residential, commercial, industrial resulting tax rates with the theoretical shifts up at the top and what the average tax bill would be, that would correspond with the shifts. So the impact of shifting change based on a 2023 factor of one-one-five, if you go to the column, not on the far right, but the one next to it, at the one-one-five, you know, there's gonna be no, no change if the, at the rate remains the same. It would be all the way down the board, it would just be the same rate. But if you shifted the tax rate on the residential side for every one-one-hundredth down, it would result in about an eighteen-dollar more per factor shift to the residential average tax bill. Well, you can see on the commercial below, saving the corresponding almost two-hundred dollars per shift. And the industrial, about two-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars per shift. The effect, the effect of splitting the tax rate on commercial industrial assessments, so if you, these are just informational. If you had property A and you had higher tax rates, that would create a lower net operating income for the commercial property, which would result in a lower assessment. If you had property B, had a lower tax rate, would produce a higher net operating income, would result in a higher assessment. So higher taxes have a negative impact on building values. This is a snapshot of the fiscal twenty-two local towns and actual taxes for a single-family residential. Again, the, the two communities in this slide that have split tax rates are Auburn and Worcester. And you can see the rest all have a single, single rate. You can see the average single-family home value in each one of those communities times their residential tax rate, resulting in the, the actual taxation on the vast majority of the residential class in each one of those communities. The average Auburn real estate bill versus the state. Fiscal twenty-two is fifty-three-seventy-nine and the average real estate tax bill throughout the Commonwealth was six-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars. So the residents of Auburn do pay about eleven-hundred dollars less than the average. That's a state average. Actual rate is, still remains in the top twenty-five percent. Home value trends. This probably shouldn't be a surprise to anybody and it's probably pretty similar throughout most communities in the area, but it's obviously going up. Last year, the average single-family home in Auburn was about three-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand. This year, it is three-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand. So it's up about thirteen-point-seven percent. Excess levy history. This is proposition two-and-a-half. The town is allowed to levy up to two-and-a-half percent every year. And this is a historical snapshot of how the town administration has levied and they've kept it well under the two-and-a-half. Fiscal twenty-two is one-point-two. Fiscal twenty-one was zero. Fiscal twenty was one-point-one-seven and so on. So over the, the twelve-year savings has been over forty-nine million and I think fiscal twenty-three is up to approximately fifty-seven million, Ed?
Yeah, correct.
So what if we levy to the max? The average residential bill would be up seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars. So the administration has been, done a great job of not doing that. And the average commercial bill would be up over three-thousand dollars. This is kind of a tough slide to see, but we've seen, this just gives the corresponding tax rates with each individual shift kind of broken down a little bit more. And again, they usually go on five-and-a-half cent roughly increments per hundred thousand on the residential side. And there are personal exemptions that are offered through the town of Auburn and every community in Massachusetts. They are promoted. They're forty-one C elderly person sixty-five or older. They are income and asset regulated. Seventeen D, which are surviving spouses or seniors over seventy. Surviving spouse can be any age. They are, there's asset limits. Thirty-seven A are the blind and veterans. And there's a corresponding, the corresponding numbers and how many were granted in fiscal twenty-two are on each side, on the right side, excuse me. Are available to, you know, seniors and veterans and the blind and things like that. And they are promoted at the senior center and at the assessor's office. And we have copies of them here. And information and also the forty-one Cs require, they get some discount off their sewer and trash too, they qualify, so. And that concludes the slideshow for the fiscal twenty-three tax classification hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Willard. Does the board have any questions before we allow for public comment?
We'll discuss after, correct?
Yeah, absolutely. This is just on the presentation.
Mr. Willard, just one question. As part of our, and I apologize, I didn't have, I forgot our policy on the tax classification that we'd come up with last year. You really hit it on the head though, in terms of the tax relief policies in place.
Yeah, I don't know if that was available in the slide. You got this on the last page.
Uh, yeah, I did see that, so, so thank you for that. So as per our policy, that we would look each year to make sure that we're taking advantage of all possible tax relief policies for those fixed income residents and residents with handicaps, as you mentioned. Does that still remain the case?
Yes, it is. Yes. We mail them numerous times, call them, promote that at the senior center, try to make that widely publicized and available.
All right. Very good. All right, and now we'll move to public comments on the matter. Does anybody wish to speak on the matter?
Yep.
Want him coming up here, Scott, or there?
Seth, you can come up here and then we'll have residents go to the podium. If you could just give your name and address for the record, Mr. Gentile?
I'd be happy to. My name's Mattio Gentile, sixteen Winchester Rev. I'm, I'm an Auburn center kind of guy now. So I'm here again. Imagine that. It's only been like, I think I've been here ten out of the eleven years. So let's start off. My name again is Mattio Gentile, a proud Auburn resident. I come before you tonight as a representative of the Auburn business community. We would like to recognize and thank you for the efforts put forth to attract new businesses to our town. The Drury Square overlay and a revitalization, increase in the building height limits and past tax adjustments have all been positive actions to attract businesses. The logical next step and consistent with those initiatives would be to lowering the commercial tax rate with the ultimate goal of a lower single tax rate for Auburn residences as well as businesses. We are currently at one-point-five differential, one-point-one-five differential. We could ask that you bring it down to a single tax rate today. However, we understand that the burden will shift to the residents and we ultimately want a lower tax rate for all of us, businesses and residents. Instead, we suggest that you bring the rate down over three years and allow new businesses to come in at the lowest rate now. This would bring additional revenues to offset the periodic decrease over the next three years. We hope to attract businesses into town that the residents want and that we don't have. And they don't have to look outside of our town to get goods and services. As leaders, how do you propose we do that? How can we work together to make this happen? I have a little handout if it's okay to pass up to you guys. And if anyone in the audience needs some, they can see. Jackie. Okay, so if you look at the first map, it's really simple and this is what we wanna explain is that to bring businesses into town, we wanna make our town look more appealing. And we get competition across the state, out of state, but the closest competition we have are the towns that are, they've got a tax number, that's a rate per thousand, that's highlighted in green. In Auburn, it's got the blue, which is the residential rate and the yellow, which is the commercial rate. We're in competition every day to attract businesses and one of the things that businesses look at is what's the tax rate? How much is it gonna be for us to locate our business there? So that's a concern that business owners look at is, it comes, it comes off our bottom line. We, we can't make as much money if we have to pay out a lot more in taxes. So that's just the immediate, our closest competition. As an example, or some examples, if you turn to the second page. On the left-hand side, we took two businesses, the, the Bolin Alley down the street. And if they basically were in a different town, they would see, and these are annualized, this is how much money they would save annually if they were not in Auburn, if they were in these towns, they would be saving that much money each and every year. Some pretty significant numbers when you multiply it over time. On the right-hand side, a real strong example as to, we don't have a Market Basket in town. They were considering Auburn and we don't know exactly the reasons they chose Oxford versus us. I know a lot of Auburn, I see a lot of Auburn folk at Market Basket when I go shopping there. So I know it's very desirable. But they're in Oxford. If they were in Auburn, it would cost them forty-two-thousand dollars plus every single year, year after year. So you think that might have had some effect on why they went out of our area? So we love to see more businesses come to town. We believe that will increase revenue for the town, which will hopefully make all the residents as well as businesses taxes come down. So we thank you in advance for your consideration and, you know, we'd love to see that trend move down. There's been a few years on a slide where it stayed stagnant. We wanna see movement and three years would be perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Gentile. Any further public comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Craig Blaze, I'm the president of the Worcester Business Development Corporation in the city of Worcester, former selectman here in Auburn. Just here to speak and endorse what Mr. Gentile has said. We are seeing a tremendous amount of growth in the city of Worcester. We are seeing a tremendous amount of growth, uh, in the city of Worcester and in the entire region. And I think Auburn could capitalize on that. Uh, we're running out of space, believe it or not. We're not going to make more land. Brownfields are getting cleaned up, and there's a tremendous amount of investment that's occurring coming from the east-west. I think Auburn could capitalize on that. Look, it, pennies on a tax rate, a lot of times don't make a difference, but you send a perception to the business community and to the investor that this is a, this is a place to do business. You have the infrastructure, you have the utilities, you have the infrastructure that's necessary, water and sewer, that a lot of those communities cannot capitalize on. Auburn has, uh, has had a history of doing good zoning and good planning. Your corridors on Route twenty and Route twelve are prime for redevelopment in a lot of instances. There will be a plan at some point to redevelop the Auburn Mall. And I think if you send the right perception, and not, uh, all at once, but that you're trending in the right direction to be a little bit more friendly, uh, and to make the investment work for businesses that are close to the margins, like a supermarket, that, that, um, looks at every single penny, uh, they, they rely on large amounts of volume, um, and every cost matters, uh, with a development like that. Uh, I think it will make a big difference. Um, you're trending in the right direction, uh, thanks to good, uh, administration here and good leadership from the Board of Selectmen. Uh, it, I'm so proud, uh, to see where the town, uh, has gone over the last ten years. I think the trend you set, um, going back from two thousand and eleven, uh, to start to show that, uh, I think it's paid dividends, and I think it would continue to pay dividends if you looked at that. You look at the town of Shoesbury, um, strong on infrastructure, single tax rate, uh, they've looked at all the hurdles, uh, to development. They have their own municipal electricity, they have their own municipal internet, um, they've kept all those rates down, and they've kept their tax rate down. Uh, we tried to do deals, um, in the town of Shoesbury, and the former town manager, Dan Morgano, used to say, we already have a TIF. It's called our tax rate. Uh, we compete with everybody, um, around here, and you see from that chart, uh, what that, what that has done. It's difficult, um, it's not fair that the state puts this, um, process unfairly, I think, uh, on local selectmen, uh, to set up a classified rate like this, um, but it's the reality of it. Um, and so you have to make, make, make the difficult choices. But I agree, if we can expand the pie, that lowers everybody's rate, including the residents in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay, any further public comment?
Good evening. My name is Alex Guardiola. I am, uh, vice president of Government Affairs and Public Policy for the Worcester Regional Chamber of Commerce, along with our affiliate, the Auburn Chamber of Commerce. And I want to thank you for your time this evening. Uh, you're gonna hear a little bit of repetitiveness because they stole all my thunder already, so, thank you very much, but, uh, but I'm here this evening in support of continuing the, the work of narrowing the tax gap between the residents and the businesses. We're at a critical time here in Auburn. Uh, there's an opportunity to lure new businesses while helping and retaining our current businesses here in the town. Since the new census numbers came out, it's abundantly clear that more people are moving west of the capital and living and calling central Massachusetts home. Attracting new businesses to the town will add to the tax base and ultimately lower taxes for both the residents and the businesses. If we continue to incentivize businesses by coming, uh, having them come here with a fair and equitable tax rate, there will be more, uh, payers into the tax system, which will add not just dollars, uh, from the folks that are coming in, but also vibrancy, new workforce. When you look at neighboring communities such as Shoesbury, as mentioned earlier, Oxford and Milbury, they continue to thrive because they have a single tax rate. When a company is looking to locate for their new business and their new home, if it's not the first, it's probably one of the top three things that they look at is the tax rate in that area. And it's just common sense to be interested in doing business in a town that doesn't wipe out their bottom line because of taxes. If we're looking again at Market Basket, the one in Shoesbury now, they have a fourteen dollar plus per thousand rate. On Route twenty, that place was dilapidated, it was an old drive-in. And guess what? They have now added a whole new host of people who are going to be living there and shopping there. Moreover, Auburn is in a unique position because of accessibility. With major highways and roads going right through the town, it should logically be a top place for folks to come do business. It's accessible within an hour, maybe a little more, to three of the five capitals in the area. So when you look at it, I want to just reaffirm the fact that Auburn needs to be able to be fair and equitable to both the businesses and residents. So I ask you to continually and gradually move towards a single rate. As Mr. Gentile mentioned earlier, it can't be done overnight, but we need to work together to continue to make this area thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further public comment? Seeing none, do we have any discussion from the board?
You guys want me to go first?
Sure.
Try to step back.
I'm looking at the three of you.
That's because you took the end.
Doesn't matter, there are three of you, only one of you.
Well, it's been stated from me before that I am in favor of a single rate. Um, I also respect the opinions of other people on my board. Um, so I would like to see it move closer. I wouldn't ask for a single rate at this time, but I definitely think that the businesses in the community do get back. They've gone through some struggles, we've seen some leave. I think we should definitely help out where we can. And I think if we were to move the rate and at one point one-two, that adds fifty-eight dollars, fifty-four dollars?
Yep.
On the residential bill, which is less, you know, than a dollar a week. I think that is something that benefits us all. Again, when you look at the differentiation from a property A and B and lower rates help, I think this is a good step at this time for a low cost to the residents, even though it is an increase on the residents who put us here.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. Ms. Ruffley?
I think at, I mean, we, I, I think because we didn't lower it all last year, that, um, in support of the businesses, we should lower it a little bit this year. Um, and I think looking at the other towns in the area, that it's definitely, uh, important to keep our businesses here.
I've said it.
You have.
I, I've said it for the past two years as well. Um, I, Mr. Blaze's comments I would echo, especially in terms of tight margins. I've seen on Facebook time and time again, why don't we, you know, Trader Joe's, we have this. Well, we always say, well, we can't really control what businesses come into town. Well, you can when you look at these tight margins of some of these, some of these companies, that they do have to take these things into account. Um, the counterargument to being, well, people want to be on Route twenty and Route twelve and these state roads either way, but, um, I've just never really bought that. I think that it does matter, especially when you have the city of Worcester, um, kind of going the other way with it these days. I think there is an opportunity for this town. Um, and, and I do believe that moving towards a single tax rate will lower the taxes for everybody. And I've made that clear for, really since I have started running, much like Mr. Chambers has. Um, so yeah, there's really not a lot of pomp and circumstance this year. I think everybody kind of knows where everyone stands.
I do have a question.
Sure, absolutely.
I wanted to hear from everybody else. So if you're done?
I'm done.
Last night checked through you to the town manager, how many businesses benefit from the small business exemption?
Last year was seventy-eight. I think this year we have about sixty-two. Uh, there's a bunch that valued above a million dollars, or less than that, or not the owners, or probably not the owners of the chain. The owner is a January one, twenty-twenty-two, and the property's changed soon, so the blue blocks of the field are above themselves.
How many, how many businesses own their own property and power?
Yeah.
That get the small businesses exemption? Well, just in general. Because that's really where I think the problem lies, is the triple that lease, which transfers everything to the tenant and the owner of the building has virtually no responsibility financially for it. Um, what is the top interest, what is the top exemption that we give to any of those classes that you identify?
Small business?
Nope. Veterans, probably.
I think we go up to fourteen hundred dollars for residential is the top of exemption.
Veteran, we have up to two thousand.
Two thousand. Lisa Tardowski, pretty much spearheads that up to two thousand.
Yeah, and we have one veteran that's a point two C that actually has the ability to go up to two.
And how many did, uh, now, most of the bad, the town, the board?
Last year, uh, two hundred and twenty-two approvals.
And what are the averages? We're talking about two thousand for veterans, what is the average for elderly and?
Um, the elderly, like the forty-one Cs, a lot of them have maxed out at fourteen hundred. They started out with a first year at five hundred, and, um, have the ability of a year of their assessment of weight, but I calculated that they have to go beyond. Most of them, I think, are right around the thousand.
And I will say, they do a great job promoting that. I, I will say that, but you guys go above and beyond, I think, what most communities do. Ten communities in the Commonwealth give the small business tax exemption. So we have sixty-two. We are lowering the rates. We are helping business. So I'm not, I'm not averse to going back this year, um, but I'm not going to go back a lot, um, if I do. But the reality is, we have been doing that. And if I can trust the minutes, a Board of Selectmen, around two thousand actually was pushing for the small business tax exemption to be made law in the common law. So it's not a very old law. But assesses, we, we did that, not only did they do it, they also put it to good use. So I do think that we are friendly to business. I think if we look at our zoning versus any of the towns that you mentioned, I think you'd be very surprised at how much of their square footage is devoted to business uses versus Auburn. So Auburn has always been good for business. Auburn is developed. Oxford, half of the town doesn't even have sewer, so they don't have enough water. They have all sorts of issues. So the, the reality is, I don't consider us in competition, because every time I go to these communities, I see less business than I see in Auburn. Why? Because Auburn has always welcomed business, and we continue to welcome business. We have an economic development officer. Many of these communities don't have that. So I think we do other things to help businesses come into the community. I know during COVID, the economic development officer was working overtime, trying to get the changing market out there. She's since moved on, but, so I think there's different ways that communities help their business community. So I think we have done it, I think we continue to do it, and as I said, you know, for eight years running, every year that I've been sitting here, whether we've moved the factor or not, commercial has had savings, the residents have had increases. They're going to be hit with a sixty-six percent electric bill, they're getting hit with all of the increases in goods that we all are facing. So I think we're all having a tough time, and the difference is, they're not making any money off of living in their house. It's a fundamental difference to me. Worcester's going in the opposite direction, which I would never recommend. We want to be competitive, but I, I won't be here next year, so, but I would never vote for a single tax rate, because I just don't believe that it is equitable affair based on what the business community does in its own, in its own sphere. It charges residential people different than it does businesses. And I think government, especially with the new schools that we've built, with a proposal for a new, uh, public safety complex, we've got buildings that we don't know what's going to happen to them. I think, uh, we've seen the residences pay twice as much in the last, since two thousand and eight or more. The state average is something that I'm interested in achieving. I think six thousand dollars is a hell of a lot of money to actually go to sleep and, and build. But I don't have control over that, only my vote tonight. So I'll wait to hear what the board, what their desire is to move back, and I'll decide whether I'm in support of it or not.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. And any questions, comments from the administration?
Yeah, I'd like to make a few comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just want to identify, um, the board's reaffirmation of the vote that they took last year relative to a continuance to chisel away at the dual tax rate. And I want to applaud the board for that vote. Uh, and we're going to do what we can to provide you with the mechanisms to, to do that. And I think the evidence shown tonight in Seth's presentation clearly defines what our strategy was in terms of limited taxation across the board. And I think that slide, and we continue to show that at the annual town meeting, because I think that's an important slide to focus on. We try to limit the level of taxation that would provide a dividend not only to our residential taxpayers by not taxing to the max, but it will allow you to continue to chip away at that dual tax rate and offer even more savings to the residents and to the businesses of our community, because ultimately, one of the slides that Seth showed over a period of time shows the level of new growth increasing on the CIP as a percentage of the total growth. And it may only be five to ten percent, but you get to remember, that percentage of value when the commercial industrial is three times the value of residential is even a larger share of the pie. Uh, so that's, that's important to note. Additionally, I, I know people focus on our level of tax rate compared to other communities in the region. And when you boil it down, about a dollar fifty on the tax rate was by vote of mandate to fund two of our school projects. So when you back that off at a factor of one fifteen, estimated to be at fifteen dollars and seventy-two cents, when you take that off, our tax rate becomes more competitive, um, to the other surrounding communities. Uh, so they'd be like a fourteen twenty-two. The high school debt is going to fall off in twenty twenty-four, we have one more year of payment, so there will be some relief, all depending on the residents' wishes for a public safety facility, if that should go to the borders. They're going to have a S and M, and so, um, I wanted to comment on that. And, um, also, uh, in conjunction with limited taxation, we put together a series of financial policies that allowed us to do that, supported by a vote of the Board of Selectmen, is supported by a vote of the Finance Committee. And we continue to adhere to those policies, which ultimately is paying dividends across the board by reduced savings and, and, um, our interest costs that we pay for borrowing. Uh, it's giving us a higher yield on our return on, on investments that benefit from our board by adding more local receipts, increasing our stabilization, providing ready date funds for situations that may be unforeseen or unexpected. Um, so with that, I just wanted to emphasize those key points, and I just hope that helps the board in, in making whatever decision it needs to make tonight.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Kastanovich, and Ms. Jacobson.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Ed, for saying that. Just to follow up on what Ed said, I think the other aspect to this, first of all, since I've been here, uh, back in two thousand and eleven, I've always advocated for a movement toward a single tax rate. I think, as Ed said, our, our level of new growth every year shows that Auburn, to, to Mr. Carpenter's point, Auburn is doing well in businesses, but that's not because of organic, it's because the administration has tried really hard to encourage new businesses to come here. We have friendly boards and commissions, we have training for our boards and commissions, we have friendly staff, we have the DCG. We try to make it easy for businesses that do come here to do business. And for businesses that are looking to do here, we now have an economic development department. So we're working really hard to make it an attractive environment for businesses. I think what we have to point out is, this year, uh, should the movement take place and should the board make that decision, that people need to keep in mind that the businesses in this community- that people need to keep in mind that the businesses in this community do have a strong impact on the community as a whole. They donate to our Little Leagues. They support Auburn News and Family Services. They support programs. They're there for a lot of things that would otherwise cost the town money that we would have to do. So we can personally say that the business community has supported, you know, we're glad we can now have our summer concert series back, but in the past, they've stepped forward on the summer concert series. They've stepped forward on a lot of things for field development and large projects. They've been there. And on top of that, talk about the jobs. Look at the jobs that are created from members of this community. I look at the audience right now, and I see members of the business community who are here supporting a lower differential, who are Auburn residents. So I think you have to look at both aspects of this. This isn't business community against the residents. This is how do we all work together to get to a rate that is fair, equitable, and affordable for everybody? So we do look at the, the state rate. We do look at other rates. We look at our levels. We, we are financially well-managed. Our tax rate may be higher than some communities, but it's a lot lower than many communities. I believe there's, I think we're the top twenty-five in this area. I think twenty-five percent, we're the highest twenty-five percent in, in the state on the commercial side. So I, I think it's, if the board chooses to move that direction, I think overall, it's a win for the residents. Someone has said it many times, but if you grow the pie and you get more businesses here, then you will help the residents. If we continue, if we do lose businesses, and that will happen, tax rate or not, we're not saying that won't happen, but if we do lose businesses, the residents have to absorb that. And if you look at a large taxpayer like an Auburn Mall or an industrial park, that's a lot of burden that you're going to shift to the residents if, over time, businesses in those areas start to go down. So I think it's important to, when the board is able to make that shift, to make that shift. And clearly, there were a couple of years that it wasn't possible. This year, because of the, because of the valuations, there's less of an impact on the residents to make that shift. Last year, that wasn't necessarily the case. So as Ed said, we just try to give you the tools and resources that you need to be able to make a, a good decision. We do everything we can on our end with the financial management, with all the investments in Jewelry Square, with the things that we're doing to encourage businesses to come here and to let them know that they're welcome and we appreciate their business. So we just, over time, would like to see as close to a single tax rate as possible. I, we've always liked the long-term plan for it. Nobody here, including the business community, feels that going to a single tax rate immediately is a smart move. But certainly making a consistent effort to get there over time. And it's, it's been several years. So I think this year may be that time.
Thank you. And with that, do we have a motion to close the hearing?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And I will warn you guys. Mr. Waller had wanted this back in October. He's under some serious deadlines. So we have a four-man board, and we are not leaving here without a vote tonight. Any further discussion on the matter? No? Okay. I just end that. Mr. Chambers, I would be in agreement with the shift that you threw out there. All right. So do we have any motions?
I'd make a motion that we shift the residential factor to 1.12.
With a nine-six, one-six? Same thing?
Yes. Yep.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Three to one. It is a vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But you also have to continue to take the votes on the exemptions now.
Yep. All right. Moving on to the open space discount. Do we have a motion?
Is that what we normally do? Yes. I'll second. Had a moment to blink. I don't remember.
That's fine. That's fine. All right. Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is a vote. Okay. And next, we have a motion on the residential exemptions.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. And lastly, the small, small commercial exemption, which we normally have.
Yes.
Okay. Ten percent?
Ten percent.
Is the existing exemption? Okay.
Do we need to give a percentage in the motion?
I would motion to keep it the same. No.
To adopt that ten percent?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to adopt that ten percent.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. All right. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Seth.
So do you want to thank the businesses here?
Yes.
I made it spring that we had a hearing.
Yep. All right. So no communications. Moving on to select board general items. We have Lish Nutrition, application for common particular license at 850 Southridge Street, Auburn, Mass. Guys, the public hearings had to happen by a certain time. I would have absolutely moved you up had I had any ability to do so. So thank you for sitting through that. It's... Okay, I was gonna, I was about to say, can't be that interesting, but... So thank you, guys. You can come up if you'd like. How were you tonight?
Good, thank you.
Could you just give your names for the record?
Stacy Holmes.
Jay Yargo.
Okay. All right. And we have the, you guys have everything in your packets, the application? Okay. All right. Do you guys have anything to add in addition to the application or...? Okay.
Just trying to been complying with everything that they're...
Yep.
Just if I can step into for the board, so they, they did go to DCG. And there's the DCG letter in the packet, and they realize that they do need to get a couple more permits because it's food related. So a couple things from the board to help that they'll be in the process of getting. So this is, as, as we do often, this is a vote that the board would take, obviously conditional upon getting the other permits that they need because this board is just the licensing authority for the common vics.
It just shows for one permit, right? Yeah, which we got dealt with today, I believe.
Good. All right. Any questions at the board?
What do you sell on?
This will be nutritional protein meal replacement shake and herbal tea shop. There was one there already, and I'm just looking to reopen what was started. Thank you.
Any further questions? All right. Who wants to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the license, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its department boards, commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all of the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all of the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed upon the license. And that license will be for the remainder of 2022 and 2023.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Congratulations, guys.
Awesome. Thank you.
Do we go rate the license? Seems like it's at the end of the year.
Oh.
Oh, in terms of the cost?
Yeah, they'll only be charged, I believe, for the, you were just charged for the one year, correct?
Okay.
Or was it, were you charged the one, just for one year? Or were you prorated just a couple of months toward the end of the year? You didn't have to pay for two full years of the license, correct?
I think we paid after the license.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. So what we generally do is we will prorate it so they're not paying for an entire...
Okay.
I just didn't know if they had already paid.
All right. And that's just as a matter of policy? So there's no vote?
Yeah, no, no.
Okay.
Except for the permit, the building permit?
No, no, that's a separate issue. The building permit is separate. You work with the building department on it. This is just for the common vics.
Wait, and why are you getting charged a full year when it's the end of the year?
It's near now and no longer.
This year, I hope I will be open.
Yep. So if you're not open, and it would just, you would start it for next year and just pay the one year. But we can work all that out in the office when you come back in and see right.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Right. We have no gift acceptances, no proclamations, recognitions. And that leaves us with discussion on potential votes, or in potential votes, excuse me, on the December meeting schedule.
Well, thank you. We put that on there as we do every year. This year, your second meeting of December is on the day that the holiday is celebrated, the day up to Christmas. So Christmas is on a Sunday, the 25th. So the 26th is the recognized holiday. So the board can't meet that night anyway, so what we would generally...
You haven't sent out Charles Dickens's book to all the staff? Do you want a holiday on Christmas too?
Absolutely. Absolutely. So in the past, for those members who are new at the holidays, generally, it's a quiet time anyway. Most of the licenses you've already had before you or will have had before you, we try to make sure we don't save anything for Christmas week anyway, Christmas, New Year's week, because a lot of people are away. So if something, if you do, you, you don't have to cancel the meeting because you can't have it that night anyway. But if you decide not to schedule another one that week, if something urgent came up, we would get in touch with you. And the beauty of it is still being able to have something remote. If we needed to get you together quickly and we could post a meeting, we would certainly let you know.
Okay. So we just have the 12-12 meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
So that will give you two more before the end of the year. You'll have November 28th and then December 12th.
I'm not going to be here on the 12th. My daughter's cheer team is going to Nationals, so we are going to be in Orlando. Thank you. She's very excited.
Do you have any other scheduling conflicts for the 12th?
I should be here.
Okay.
Steve, for now.
I'll be here the 26th.
I could probably call in in case, if you guys need. I could probably call in.
Okay. All right. And with the, I guess, well, with the understanding that if any urgent matters came up, we'd look to schedule something, some special?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Do we have a motion?
We'll make a motion that we schedule a single meeting in December on the 12th, subject to call of the chair and the president of the American League.
And a second. We have a second. Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. All right. No town manager items or tabled items. The minutes from October 11th and October 24th. Does anybody have any questions concerning edits?
I can say one thing because I do know that I owe everybody the outline to the student rep position.
Yes.
I've been trying to meet with somebody to give me some additional kind of value, and I don't know if I'm meeting with the president, but this person has a schedule to match the president, so I will get that to the board as a response.
Excellent.
Certainly, any ideas are welcome.
And once you have that, you let me know. We'll put that right on the agenda. There's no problems there.
I know I'm supposed to be heading up the naming committee.
Yes.
Which I have severely neglected those duties.
That's understandable.
To get on that, but I was also told about...
You don't have another member?
I do. Todd Corain and Mr. Corain, I believe, were the other members. So I don't have their official emails. I don't know.
That's for you.
How to contact them. But also, at the same time, I don't know who's in charge of the flag committee. And if someone is running that, I know former board member was on that.
Actually, Tristan had been...
The head.
The head of it. I don't know that anyone else. We had voted out there for another member, and we did not get any other applicants.
Okay.
So right now, I think there's two. There will be two members.
Two members plus Steve.
Yeah, I'm going to double-check on that. I don't, I don't know that we have three.
Okay. All right. If we get that on the agenda, yeah, for the, for the next hearing. Because we certainly, it made good progress, so I think we wanted to see it through to the finish line.
I thought it was done, to be honest. I, I didn't know about that. And again, I've neglected getting that other committee, so I will work on that.
Yeah, we'll take a look and see. It, it has been a while. It's probably been five or six months since Tristan probably left then. So we'll go back and check and see what we posted and see what kind of applications we had.
I was recently scolded and overtaxed by Mr. Liberty on that one, so I meant to bring that up. Thank you.
We still do have a vacancy for the appointment that the board needs to try to appoint for the library board of trustees. We just don't have any applicants.
Just no applicants? Okay. Okay.
And we advertised it very heavily.
Right. All right. All right. Very good. All right. And do we have a motion to adjourn?
So who?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Thanks, guys.